How are you?
I'm doing good. Better now.
So, um, in case you want to volunteer for the...
I will. I'll do a day. What day do I do the, I do the card show?
Friday night. They start coming in at four.
Okay.
So if you want to do direct in and...
Yeah, I'll do this, you know, in this spot here. Something there.
And then...
Oh, no, no, that was the wrong one. I thought we weren't doing Thursday.
That's for setup.
Oh, this is blacked out?
Yeah, blacked out. To Jeff?
I'm going away at some point during that. It's, it's blacked out. Where you would have to, normally you'd put your name in here, right? Like from here to here?
This is setup, and then there's Friday for the festival.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I see that. I'm sorry. Okay.
We have to, we have to separate so that we... Why is it so dark over here?
Oh, wow.
Yep, we're gonna, we are going to start. Are they ready? Yep. Good evening. I'd like to call the, let's see, July 16th Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting to order. It is 6:35. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Here.
President.
Here.
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 Do I hear your motion to accept the minutes of the June 18th WPCA Town Council meeting?
Well, moved. Either way.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? The next one is minutes of the June 25th Special Meeting of Town Council via Zoom. Do I hear your motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
Okay.
I abstain from the Zoom meeting. Oh, I abstain too, sorry.
Okay. So, motion carries. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Water Pollution Control Authority. Correspondence regarding WPCA? None. There's no unfinished business, no new business, any citizen's statements regarding WPCA. Okay. We are on to the Regular Town Council Meeting. Community events and presentations. Seeing none, we will move on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is economic development. Okay, no problem. Next one is Park and Recreation. Park and Rec met on Tuesday, June 25th. They had a lengthy discussion on standardizing signs for the youth sports to be put up on the fences around whether it's football, baseball, that type of thing. Part of the issue becomes warranty on the fences if there's any damage because they're not taken down or they're too big, windstorms, that type of thing. So, they're, they're setting standards for signage because that is a major fundraiser for youth sports. So, they don't want to inhibit that, but they want to have some consistent guidelines for their signage. So, there was quite a discussion in regards to that. They discussed appropriation transfers, which will be later on our agenda. The month in review, they have, they're serving over 300 meals a month through the senior program. Their summer camp program started in June, and they have been waitlisting on the weeks. It's been very successful, having a lot of people out. They had the senior picnic in June. They also had Touch a Truck. They had a few different socials. And of course, the big thing right now is they are gearing up for the Poco Festival. We are less than three weeks away, and things are all coming together. Anyone here who would like to volunteer, we would gladly take volunteers. All of my colleagues on the council tonight got forms, and I appreciate any and all help that you can give us. So, we, it's a go, and we're just praying for the beautiful weather that we had last year because it was the perfect weekend for Poco last year. And also our sponsors, we have a number of sponsors here tonight. We greatly appreciate all of your sponsorship. We could not do this without our sponsors. So, we will be advertising all of our sponsors continuously because they are a huge help to the Poco Fest and our volunteers. So, we will take any and all volunteers that weekend. That's all I have on Park and Rec. Next is Police Commission.
The Police Commission did not meet this month, however, just a reminder, tomorrow's an exciting day for the Police Department. At 9:30 in the morning is a grand opening of the new police facility, and tomorrow night at 6:30 in the auditorium, there's the clearing and ceremony of our new chief and deputy.
Okay, Fire Commission.
Next meeting is, I'm checking, the next week. Nothing to report at the time.
Okay. Planning and zoning. Tom is not here tonight. Finance Subcommittee did not meet in July. We took the summer off. So, our next meeting will be August 13th. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
My understanding is that everything went well today at the 911 transfer.
Great. Inland Wetlands.
The next meeting is next Wednesday, July 24th.
Okay. And Blueprint. I know Tom's not here. You didn't meet. Okay, great. All right, that concludes committee reports. On to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the council. As Counselor Diamond mentioned, tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m. we're holding ribbon cutting ceremony with the Police Department and EOC located at 305 Foxen Road. Federal, state, and local officials will be on hand to celebrate as the Police Department cuts over this week from the old building to the new facility. Special guests at this event will include Congresswoman Rosa Delora and State House Attorney Vincent Candelora, who were instrumental in securing funds toward the new facility. And as Counselor Diamond also mentioned, the festivities will continue tomorrow as we hold a formal square meeting with the new Chief Police, James Lovelace, and our new Deputy Chief, Michael Pendleton. This event has been capably organized by our own Counselor Marie Diamond. It will be held at the North Branford Auditorium at 6:54 Foxen Road, 6:30 p.m. after the ceremony. Light refreshments will be served in the auditorium lobby. And also, as Counselor Diamond mentioned, the communications cut over. You still have to slow down my stuff. That's okay, but I still want to read it. The non-emergency 911 from the old PD to the new building took place today. And during my last check-in with the chief, all is proceeding fine. We're good. Okay, all right, that's good news. So, we're, we're good there. We also want to welcome two new police officers. You'll remember, we had two new officers that were in the academy. Nicholas Trevino Martinez and Anthony Brody, following their graduation from the Connecticut Police Academy in Merit in Class 381, and we wish them a safe and rewarding career as they take up their new duties here in North Branford. Extreme hot weather protocol, you may have noticed that it's hot outside, or what we refer to in North Branford as Poco weather. Hopefully, that doesn't carry through this year. This week marks the third time that the government's implemented an extreme hot weather protocol this season as we're in the midst of another heat wave. In consideration of this, North Branford has again opened our cooling stations through Wednesday night, July 17th. Our cooling stations are at the North Branford Town Hall, open from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And the Outwater Memorial Library from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Residents can also dial 211 or visit 211ct.org to find additional sheltering locations near that. Poco was already mentioned by our Mayor Angeloni, and I would not presume to have an update on that as we have our own mayor here, who is one of the festival coordinators to report. But we're looking forward to an exciting festival this year, August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, thanks to the coordinators, volunteers, sponsors, and vendors, as well as our Police Department and Public Works Department, for all the advanced planning that is going on in making this the most successful Poco Festival yet. And I did want to note that the Veteran Service Commission will be sponsoring a Purple Heart event on Sunday noon at the festival, where we will be designated as a Purple Heart community, which is one of the tasks that the new commission had been assigned. I was pleased to join Mayor Angeloni and State Representative Vin Candelora in congratulating three very special leaders in the North Branford community, who were recognized by North Branford Rotary Club on June 28th at Woodlands in Branford. Mary Ellen Delela and of the Totucket Historical Society, Ashley McLean, who is the founder of Beyond Horizon Incorporated, and our own Park and Rec Assistant Director, Carrie Haynes, were each recognized for their tremendous contributions to our community as they were awarded the Service Above Self Award and presented with citations from the state of Connecticut and the town of North Branford. And we once again offer all of them congratulations and thanks for everything they do for our town. At the end of last month, I launched the first weekly email newsletter from my office to town residents, updating them on town news and announcements. I started with a database of roughly 4,000 town residents, which grows daily. And I'm pleased to report that the open rate of the email stands at 62%, or roughly 2,500 individual unique openers, which is pretty good. 35% would actually be a great open rate for this kind of message, so it has overperformed expectations. Residents interested in receiving this email newsletter can sign up on the town website, northbranford.gov, northbranfordct.gov, or via my Facebook page. Our bond rating, note rating with Standard &amp; Poor's has recently been completed, and our AA+ bond rating has been reaffirmed, and our outlook has been deemed stable. Our notes were rated SP1+. Council has in their folder the memorandum from our Finance Director, Anthony Sespizito, which gives greater detail on our rating, and I'd like to bring him up briefly to give some more detail and answer any questions the councilors might have on that.
Well, thank you. As the manager had mentioned, we, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, we had our bond rating typically before you go out into the market. Standard &amp; Poor's does an overview, updates their information, how are things going, that sort of thing. And as, as the manager mentioned, our AA+ rating, which in the scale you have in the memo, is basically, you know, the second highest AAA rating. It's typically towns with larger grand lists, bigger communities than North Branford. So, the AA, we weren't looking for a rating upgrade, so we're happy to stay with the AA rating. Again, as, as I mentioned in the memo, you know, they use terms like, you know, a very strong capacity to pay, low market risk, affluent primary residential community, cautious budgeting practices, again, falls back on you folks, management retirement costs, all are things that are positive reflections. And again, it's a tribute to all the department heads who, you know, work collaboratively to follow out the practices that you guys endorse and the manager. And we, we all work together as a team and get these things done. And proud of the report. The, we're going to the market this Thursday, and we'll get a report back to you as to how we play out as far as what are, what kind of rates we get for both the bonds and the short-term notes. As I mentioned previously, the market is kind of skewed still. So, the short-term rates, which historically have been very low, lower than the bond rates, are now almost parallel. So, it could be 3.5, 3.75 for both the 20-year bonds, a portion that we're bonding, as well as the 1-year notes. So, it's kind of just an anomaly. When we started these bonding projects for the school and such, the 1-year bonds were like around 1%. So, as you can see, the interest rates are very imperative that we kind of get on head of these early if we could, but just the way that things play out, you can't bond at all in one shot because then you'd blow your debt service. They did mention in here about the audit being filed, not timely, and we didn't really know how to close Munis until last month for the 23-year. So, that's been taken care of. Michelle will be at your meeting in August to review the audit. We'll get it to you ahead of time. You can review it, and she'll be here to address any questions you have about the 23 audit. Any questions about this, the rating?
Thank you, Anthony. Library negotiation status, as you know, we've been completing our labor negotiations, and we have approved contracts for two of the three bargaining units with collective bargaining agreements that are up this year. I want to report that we're very close to completing our negotiations with the library group, our one remaining unit. We did have a late start in negotiating with them this year, owing to the fact that they were in the process of changing their representation from Ask Me to the Teamsters. And we hope to have a tentative agreement for the council at your August meeting. We've begun to promote signup for the town's new emergency notifications platform, Civic Ready. The new alert features easy opt-in for town residents to receive emergency notifications and news. It's available in 60-plus languages, and recipients can receive notices by phone, text, email, or via mobile app. Geo-location also allows us to target alerts to specific areas of town. Also, it integrates with our new Civic Plus Town website by sending splash page alerts and notifications to website subscribers. You can sign up to the town, on the town webpage, or call 475-655-0400 to sign up. Thanks to our team at the North Branford Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee and our Public Works Department for another successful electronics recycling event in conjunction with Take-Two Secure Electronics Recycling Incorporated. Despite a very rainy start, which took place last Saturday, July 13th, at Public Works Headquarters on Route 22, they collected 6,248 tons, including 40 mattresses, thanks to these dedicated volunteers for braving the elements for this event. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting to welcome Ariel's Barber Shop, located at Twin Lakes Plaza, 999 Foxen Road, Suite 7, on Tuesday, July 23rd at 2 p.m. Councilors are invited to join us as we welcome them to the North Branford community. We have additional ribbon cutting events planned, and they will be announced soon. You can enrich your outdoor adventures by learning to read a map and use a compass, and then test your new skills with some orienting games and an event sponsored by the North Branford Public Libraries at North Farms Park, July 17th, 10:30 a.m. Registration is required, recommended for children ages 5 to 11. And we'll be holding a second training session for elected and appointed members of boards and commissions and their clerks on parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Order and Compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Our last session was very successful. We had 20 members and clerks show up. This session will be held on Wednesday, September 18th, 6 o'clock p.m. here in the Town Council chambers. And those wishing to attend should RSVP to Gina in my office at GCOX at northbranfordct.gov. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Next is Permanent Project Building Committee.
For the North Branford High School Phase 2, the final fundamental, final adjustments have been completed on the elevator and HVAC rooftop units. Startup commenced on July 15th, and all units are expected to be running by the end of the day tomorrow. Storefront curtain wall is 95%. Final paint is ongoing on the second floor. The tile on the second floor is complete. The first-floor locker rooms are in progress, but the staircase and lobby remaining. Light fixtures are complete on the first floor and ongoing on the second floor. On, at North Branford Intermediate School, the project is approximately 50% complete. PVC roofs in the north and gymnasium moving towards the auditorium have been completed. An all-new sloped roof framing and weatherproofing has been installed. Metal roofing is expected to be delivered in mid-August. The existing wall leak investigation for the direction of the PPBC, the design and construction team worked to evaluate the metal siding installation on the existing building. A comprehensive report was issued and identified improperly flashed window and head jam and sill conditions, and rips and failures in the existing weather barrier in the wall. A new weather barrier was applied in a small area where leaks were previously present, and since the replacement, no further leaks in that area were observed. The committee continues to review similar conditions around the building. The work is scheduled to be weathered tight by the start of school, and work will be required during the fall months to close out the final installation, and will be performed outside of school operating hours. For the North Branford Police Department, the building is now complete with punch list items being worked on. The temporary certificate of occupancy has been issued, and the move-in schedule is for today, as we know. Plan is underway to address the humidity issue in the building, which will be handled by reprogramming the HVAC controls. As the council is aware, temporary portable dehumidifiers were brought in at the end of last week to improve conditions. Also, air filters are in process of being changed in accordance with contractual requirement. This evening, we're pleased to have with us Al Rose and Dave Palumbo of the Permanent Project Building Committee to give greater detail on the ongoing status of the PD building and the humidity issues, as well as the whole PD issue overall, and answer any questions councilors might have.
So, do you have any questions right off the bat, or do you want us to tell you what we, you know, where we're at? And Walter was there last night, so he got to see what's going on. I do understand that today, and actually Victor, PD Andrea brought it up last night, that Pro Gore, they haven't changed their filters in the system since April. Now, as a builder, you know, we can't, you can't go three weeks while you're building, inside the building, without changing your filters. So, that just goes to show the incompetence of everybody in charge over there. Apparently, they changed filters today, and it's made a huge difference inside that building. The filters they pulled out were clogged. They were, they were damp. And I didn't see them. I saw pictures of them, but that's what I've heard, and if...
We were there today for a couple hours. Some of us from the Permanent Projects, Victor, Clerk of the Works, we were all there today doing our walkthrough for a punch list, adding items, seeing if items had been completed. We decided to pull all the filters. Every filter in that building was clogged. We had some at the building that we replaced. Franny ended up getting more today, I think, and replacing the rest. And I believe by tomorrow, we'll see a considerable difference if we haven't already seen it today. And we were there a couple hours. You know, we, we do have a humidity issue. They are going to reprogram the system. We gave them direction last night, as Walter was there. We gave them some ultimatums, some deadlines, including holding back some money last night to get their attention, quite frankly. We started this last Wednesday. It was an all-day affair last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, up until yesterday, that several of us were there, multiple hours, including the chief, dealing with it. On Thursday, we decided to bring the dehumidifiers in for Friday morning. We couldn't get direction from Newfield. We couldn't get direction from SPA. We had Lou Fonda from Enterprise Heating and Cooling work directly with SPA, so the town was taking out of it, so we didn't give the direction to do it ourselves. We brought them in and maintained it, you know, over the weekend. Humidity is going to break, obviously, I think, on Thursday, but we're changing the filters, getting Encon or SPA. I told them last night, the rest of the group, listen, we need an answer by tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. They were on it. There is going to be, you know, a PCO coming to us. My opinion, as, as the Permanent Projects Group says, once we get, it's a $3,500 charge, which we are going to go back to SPA for. So, we don't believe it's on us. But if we didn't take this action to do it, you know, everything could sit in limbo again. So, we do have a punch list that's, has grown today of, you know, items. We are getting it tonight. You know, one of our members wrote it all down as a handful of us walked through. We're going to fire that off to Mike Fromadi tomorrow. He'll get it off to SPA to correct the rest of the punch list items. You know, there's, there's probably a couple of pages worth of issues that, you know, is it major? Some have to be addressed.
The humidity, the humidity, the humidity is, is the whole thing that was going on last week. And I, you know, looking back now, I take my hat off to mine for calming us down. I mean, I know some of you guys were on, seeing a bunch of the emails, and I'm sure you heard about it. And, you know, our, our building committee is made up with mostly people that run their own business, and we have to stand behind our own work. So, when, when I got a text Wednesday morning showing me that the humidity was 88% in that building, that was, it was, and, and nothing happened. The builder did nothing, didn't respond. SPA did nothing, didn't respond. And, you know, so we can't go directly to Encon, and Encon is the heating and cooling company that did it. You know, they're a huge company. They, they certainly have the ability to straighten this out. There's all kinds of theories out there. The system's too small. The system's too big. We did what was spec, so, you know, we're not doing anything else without a chain order. And in the meantime, the building was 88% humid. So, with Mike's help, we were able to come up with a, kind of directing SPA to say, okay, you know, we can get these. I think there's 10 units in there, still in there, that are taken out. And I don't know, is it Victor, 300 gallons a day?
300 gallons a day, it's up today at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, it's about 2,000 gallons.
So, you know, that's in there, but I will, I will tell you, when I, when I saw those filters, they're going to make a huge difference. Clogged filters. And that just goes to show, that's like elementary below Class 101, that the system won't work right without filters. They, they somehow tried to balance the system, which they still don't have a report on the balancing, which again, the computer can be set up to run correctly. The balancing is going to have to be redone because they didn't have clean air filters. And, you know, and, and the, the problem is, the people that these companies put on the job, for lack of a better word, they're kids. Okay? They're kids. They're, they might be 25 years old. They're out of college with a construction management degree. They have no idea what they're looking at, and it's across the board. It's at the high school and at the PD. So, it was really frustrating for all of us on the committee, like, how can nobody be reacting to this but us? So, after last night, and then, you know, changing the filters is going to be huge. Reprogramming it will be huge. I mean, there was just as many people saying that the system was too big. And what was happening is it was hitting the, hitting the cooling temperature very easily and very quickly, but it doesn't dehumidify if it's not on. So, it shuts off because it's on temperature, but, you know, it, it wasn't programmed to run for humidity yet. So, that's one of the things that's going to happen. And the only thing I can assure the council and the townspeople is, we have somewhere around 600,000 to 700,000 in retainage, and I can promise you, there will not be one penny released until it's, we're 110% happy with it.
Punch list included.
You know, it's, that's really all we have to report about. But on a, on a brighter note, we're really happy with the contractor working on the Intermediate School. We're not happy with what he's funding and what we bought 15 years ago. But the Intermediate School is, that contractor is...
Who is the contractor?
Doing a great job.
Eric Roofing.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. I drive by all the time.
We just gave him a directive last week to do another exploratory on a different part of the school because we've had to... because we've had such good success with the one area that had been a problem for 15 years. This guy is top of the line, they've been very good to us. Lot of recommendations, we've been out there when you find stuff, we go up on the roofs, we see what's going on. So it's, you know, we, as we see it, on the Permanent Projects, we can't allow you guys to spend all this money and not solve the problem. So, you know, we're willing to give exploratory a certain dollar amount to do more exploratory surgery to find out where we have a problem. And that's what we're, we directed it last week to do another scope of work, so.
Doing a great job.
I think that's it.
Yeah, pretty much where we're at.
You got plenty of questions.
So, excuse me. So I was fortunate to walk in the other day.
The intermediate or high school?
No, the police department.
Oh, okay.
Police department, yeah. It's gorgeous.
Beautiful though.
Absolutely beautiful. My concerns is what I do for a living. And there's a lot of money up there.
Yeah.
A lot of money up there. If anything fails, it's negligence on our part. We have to pay for all that equipment.
He's talking IT.
Right, right.
Okay? So I'm hoping that that's part of urgency, which is cleaning.
Absolutely. We found today that there's some issues that we have to address, and that's on...
A lot of cleaning.
That it hasn't been cleaned according to contract.
Right.
So, okay, so just, like you said, I was...
You know, with all the humidity and heat in that building, I mean, if we had failures, you know, as far as we were concerned, we were going back to SBA or Newfield.
So that's my, that's my thing, so, and just cleaning, because it's just...
Yeah, it's, it...
But it absolutely gorgeous, it's almost just...
Yeah, I mean, I'll say that the, you know, the structure is, the structure is, you know, nothing wrong with the structure, and their interior finish work is, you know, almost high-end residential quality. And that was a surprise to me, after seeing what these guys...
So the other concern is the, because of humidity, is the water.
Is the what?
The water that's in the ducts. I'm hoping that that's part of, that that has to be cleaned. So not just...
Especially with the, with the, with the clogged filters.
And clean the ducts.
Yep.
Because they have to be wiped out, just like the high school.
Right, absolutely.
So, but otherwise, great job.
The filters should have been done weeks ago.
Yeah.
But if it was done today, we'll stay on it, and I'm sure we'll be there. I mean, we've spent days, a lot of days, all of us there, dealing with it every day.
Awesome.
But it is a beautiful building.
So on, on your punch list is, I know there were issues with the rain on Saturday on the outbuilding. Is that on the punch list?
It's on the punch list to address the bank, that is, you know, bringing silt into the impound lot, which is bringing water into the building.
Okay.
We want to put a drain at the back door, and we want to put a drainage around the back of the impound lot. So to bring it back around the back of the building where we have some other...
So is that, site engineer is looking at that and looking at whether the, the site is the way he designed it, or whether it's not, so whether it's gonna be a change order to fix or not. But we've, we've talked to Franny. And we're pretty much done with that, with the site contractors at both places. We're not gonna give them any more change orders, and we're gonna dump it on Franny.
We still have to deal with the settlement by now, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Part of that's part of it.
But I mean, these guys are asking ridiculous numbers now for, for things, so.
Of course they are.
Yeah, I mean, they're at the end, it's like, hey, you want us to do this? And it's like, a thousand dollar job is now 10,000 dollars, and it's, and they don't fix it right anyway.
But Walter was there, got a good feeling of what we were up against last night, and what we directed them.
Yeah, I was just gonna speak up and not to be repetitive of what you said, but I, my main concern last night was, I had asked, because it sounded like when the architect was describing the system, you know, he's basically like, well, the system's in, we designed it, it's functioning, we talked to Train, and everything's okay. And everything's okay, and they're asking, what do you mean it's okay, it's not working? And he's like, well, if we wait a couple days, the humidity's gonna be going down, so it should have no problem. And I was kinda like, we need it to work when it's humid, humid not. So my concern is, we don't want it working good when it's not humid. Like, I would, I would hope that that unit could make, especially it's the police station, it's supposed to be the, what, the command center for this area and everything we have in there, all kind of electronics and everything. So I think we should be able to make that like a cooler in there. I mean, it should be, I mean, that should be the best system in the whole entire city. I mean, that should be, make it like ice or no...
Along with the heat, right?
And the same with the heat. The heat should be able to make that place 100 degrees in the winter. You know, and...
Well, after, you know, just after two hours and one special meeting before our regular meeting, you know, we got a bit heated with SBA and Newfield, and, you know, gave them deadlines and directives. Period, end of story. At eight o'clock this morning, they were on the phone with us. What frustrated all of us is, you know, this, we were moving in today. It started Wednesday. I called SBA, talked to Bob Big, Thursday called Bob, Friday called Bob. Other members of the Permanent Project, including Victor, was on this with us all, you know, helping out from the backside. You know, nobody took it serious. That's what got us to the point where we were hot last night about it. And, you know, just laid it on the line with them.
It is serious, right? I mean, it...
It is serious, and we took it serious.
Right.
Yeah. Right, wrong, or indifferent, we all look at it like it's our personal building. And for them to just ignore it. If that, if that was one of the houses I built, my crew would have been there that night. Okay, there's no excuse for that. And Newfield's a much bigger builder than I am, and they have the cloud to get their subs there. And they weren't responding.
The problem is, it goes from SBA to Newfield to ENCON, you know, back to, back to Newfield, back to SBA. It's, it's, I can't use the words to the mic, but, you know...
But we are, we are heading, we're heading in the right direction.
Is there a way for us to protect ourselves, like, let's just say they get it where it's needing the temps and the humidity we want now, but come next year, we have a 95-degree days, five in a row, and it's super humid. And really, the system, I don't think we should have a system that just gets by. We should have a system that's overkill, like 100% overkill.
You know, from what we were gathering, we've been told it's, it's both ways. It's true, it's undersized and it's oversized. We will get it to where we will not have to worry about this. You know, between the filters, between the balancing, you know...
We're hoping that we don't have to spend the money and bring a third-party mechanical engineer in. But because they haven't, they haven't looked at it, so, you know, it's like they point fingers at each other. Newfield says, well, we don't know what to do because the architect didn't tell us. And then the architect says, well, you haven't given me the balancing report, so I don't know what's going on there, so I can't direct you what to do. And in the meantime, or you could go swimming in the...
Day after, day after day, nothing gets up.
Can we bring a third party in, and even if we do have to pay an amount of money to confirm that that system...
So we, we could do that. But we wanted to, you know, we've got the 10 units in there that are dehumidifying. And I mean, I mean, like, you were there, when he goes, oh, it's good, it's down to 71% now, so we're heading the right direction. Like, no, there's 10 portable units in there.
They had the 10 units running, plus the, plus the portable, they had the air conditioners.
Yeah.
The power main system was just running.
Right. So, so, and I, you know, I did, I checked with other mechanical engineers, and I verified it today, because they weren't believing me last night. The design criteria, you start, the sweet spot when you're designing a system is 50% humidity in the summer. So that's where the design should have started. So, so I'm hopeful that that's where it was designed. I mean, Train was out there last week and said, our equipment will do this. It's not, it's not programmed, and you don't have the right thermostats to read humidity. But this, these machines will do it if it's programmed to read humidity and do that. So I believe we have the right equipment in place. But as, as the rude awakening that I've learned, being on the building committee with commercial builders is, everything's extra. When they make mistakes, the town pays for it. And, and they don't move until, until, you know, were any of us or any of you sitting there, you would have fixed it and worried about how you were getting paid later. These guys aren't gonna move until they, until somebody's giving them a piece of paper that says, yeah, go fix it.
And ironically, the 3,500 bucks, they're gonna come out and balance it.
Right, so we had to agree to that today.
Why would we pay for that? Why would we, why would we pay for that?
Again, because...
False readings, because it wasn't correct.
It wasn't that. We, we need, you know, we signed the paper that we'll pay the 3,500, but that doesn't mean we're gonna pay the 3,500. We had to do that to get them out there to redo it. And then the architect last night said that they owe us one additional setup. So I'm not sure why this wouldn't count that.
Wouldn't qualify under that.
But it's never been right, so it will be right.
What's the setup?
Well, and the balance, the balance report, we still don't have. They might have done it today, SBA, they were supposed to give.
Also, I'd like to thank Victor and also Lou for going out of their way to go and drag these 10 units to bring them in the building, so.
I mean, Lou got them, Lou got them overnight.
Right.
Yeah.
Lou called it in to get a contract.
And SBA had, you know, and Newfield is like, well, we can get to them next week.
They were gonna get them as of tomorrow, they said they can get them.
Right, so Lou found them, and what we did, they grabbed them.
So SBA is supposed to pay Lou and his company.
And that's the other thing, Lou is an expert in this field. So we have an ace in the hole that sits there with us, so.
Just so everybody knows what they're talking about, though, there's all these like home dehumidifiers, other humidifiers, all around the whole entire police station, with hoses on all over the floor. The little humidifiers and the big ones.
Yeah, there's commercial ones and a bunch of little ones.
Yeah, and they're taking out 300 gallons, which is like an oil tank of liquid a day, every day, so.
And the backup air conditioners aren't enough to do anything.
So in his, in his comment...
With clogged filters, system wouldn't work.
And his comment from, you know, 87, 88% humidity to 70, he thinks, we're doing good.
No.
But anyway.
Well, we're hanging it.
I have, I have two questions, one's for you guys, one's for Brian. The first one is, what's being done about the damage that was done to the building because of the humidity? I saw water around the vents, those are gonna rust. I've heard, I've heard maybe that the insulation is soaking wet.
Sweating.
And then, you know, paint was peeling and stuff like that, so...
We've got some trips.
So where do we stay on with that? Who's on the hook for that? And then, and then I have a second part for Brian.
So the contractor's on the hook for that.
It's all part of the punch list.
Unfortunately, it may be the building committee going through and making a list for it, because the architect, like I said, he made his punch list, so. And then, we're looking at, you know, not to make it worse, but we're looking at, you know, getting the infrared guns that shoot the building and see, okay, do we have, do we have another problem? You know, is it not insulated properly? And when they balance it, they're gonna balance it without those 10 units running, correct? They're gonna, they're gonna balance it and adjust the system, right?
By itself, right. Because that's gonna be an issue with the dehumidifiers in there. But Lou had said, let's leave them in for the rest of this week and readdress it. You know, we gave them till the 26th to solve the problem and report to us on the 29th. Today, they started, but Lou said, we're gonna leave the dehumidifiers in there until at least Friday.
And there is, there is damage, some of the trend has swollen and opened joints, and just like it's done in any of our houses, it, you know, air conditioning goes down and it's humid.
So your point, we were there two hours today, writing an additional punch list to forward it to Mike, to forward it to SBA by tomorrow, so. We're aware of it.
Yeah, Brian, my question for you, and this is not, I'm not looking to place blame, I'm not looking to beat anybody up over this, it's simply an exposure question for the town. The fact that the balancing report was not received before the town issued the TCL on the unit, does that, how does that affect the town's exposure? Does that open us up to exposure, or are things still covered? How does, how does that work?
You should, you have, well, first, you have separate counsel for the project, but in general, you should be fine, because it's only a temporary certificate of occupancy.
It's a 90-day TCL.
You know, these are, if you get the balancing report later, you've got warranties, you've got work that needs to be done. You should be protected in that regard.
So we're still good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, Kelly. Thank you.
Maybe a report, once we get another couple of meetings about the high school and the PD.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto citizens' statements, petitions, and correspondence. Do we have any citizen's statements at this time? Okay. There are no resignations or appointments listed. Unfinished business. Discussion and action on the establishment of a town flag.
We're pushing that right through.
Yeah.
So, all I wanna do tonight is, for the council's request, you know, we're going to be having a vote take place at the Potato and Corn Festival.
And Mike has all three samples.
I've gotten, for your direction, now the, all three versions. And if you want me to look to show you what they look like, but these are the ones that will be voting on.
That looks good.
This is the...
Where's Jeff's?
Where's the purple one?
It's coming.
I wanted, I wanted one that was straight, I got, I got a no vote.
He's too busy.
It's white and blue. And I'm gonna hold up Ryan, hold up the purple one.
The one I don't like, I'm gonna hold up. I like the blue one the best.
No, I like the blue one.
I gotta go.
Yours is upside down, Brian.
Seems about right.
Doesn't help it either way, so. I like Mike's.
So, the purple one doesn't work, I'm gonna take it out of me.
If the purple one...
We're planning on doing the vote is, we'll have...
The blue one looks bad.
Instead of manning it, we'll have a QR code posted, where people can vote online. Basically, Survey Monkey is just gonna take a tally of the vote of, you know, people doing it. Will you be able to vote more than once?
Can we override the vote if we're voting?
Yeah, of course. If you can take the vote and get a fourth flag, it's fine.
Mike's gonna be out there the entire night voting.
He'll sit there for like three hours.
Mike, we're gonna be voting on vote number 3,000.
Can we make the blue one twice as big as the other two?
I like your thinking.
Okay, so that, that will come to us at our August meeting. We should have the results, because it's from the Poco. So at our August meeting, we should be able to make the decision as to what the town flag will be on that. Okay, on to new business. First item is agreement with the Tottucket Historical Society concerning renovation of the Little Red Schoolhouse.
So in your packet tonight, we have a draft agreement, which is between the town and, there was a Scrivener's errors, I noted. There's, the corrected version is, it was just a misnumbering, but the agreement you had in your packets was completely accurate. But this has been reviewed by the Historical Society and our town attorney, and is approved. And certainly, they're here for us tonight, and we could hear from them about what they're planning to do in terms of renovation.
Great. Good evening. For the record, my name is Don Summers. I live in Northford at 261 Oposse Road, right down the street from Little Red Schoolhouse. As Mike just mentioned, I'm a member of the Tottucket Historical Society, and I'm also the project manager for the Little Red Schoolhouse restoration. I'm here along with Donna Summers and Mary Antalala to get permission from the town to start and finish the restoration of the Little Red Schoolhouse. Mike Downs, myself, and the town lawyer have approved an formal agreement that will allow us to start going with this project. We have raised enough money to get this project underway, thanks to the town, the state, private and business donations. Raising money for this project will be ongoing, which include government grants and additional fundraisers. Lots of educated and experienced eyes have taken hard looks at this building. An assessment and condition report was performed by a historic building architect last year, funded by the state, by the way. Also, an historic building contractor has also inspected this building. My background briefly is, I have 25 years' worth of experience in building timber frame barns, and this building, obviously, is a timber frame construction. building timber frame barns, and this building, obviously, is a timber frame construction. Uh, he, uh, he has a lot of experience, uh, restoring old buildings. Right now, he's working on one of the center churches in, in New Haven. Uh, so we used to say, there's a sense of urgency to get this project going. The roof is very decrepit, uh, small signs of leak, uh, the roof is made out of cedar, and if you take a good look at it, it's, it's, uh, decaying, it's, there's moss on it, uh, there's holes in the roof. Uh, fortunately, the town has put some tarps over it to mitigate any leaking issues. Um, so as a result, fixing the roof is the highest priority at the moment. Uh, we wanna make sure it's weather intact. Uh, so we, we're gonna focus on that first. Uh, that's all I have. Uh, Mike, anything more to weigh in on, or?
I don't think so, I think we're just excited and, you know, happy to be at the point where we're, we're ready to start this. I think everybody's excited to see after all this fundraising effort and the efforts that towns come together.
So I guess all we need is approval from the council to go forward.
Yep, yep, so we have a suggestion, motion on page eighteen, if someone'd like to read that.
Motion, the North Branford Town Council hereby order the town manager Michael P. Downs to enter into agreement with the Tottucket Historical Society to commence restoration work at property three Oak Post Road North through Connecticut, known as the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. You're ready to go.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
When will it start? When will it start?
Um, done.
I'm sorry. When will it start?
Uh, we have a, we have a bid from an experienced, uh, roofer with, at Historic Buildings. Uh, I was just waiting for approval before we move forward, uh, but I talked to him about a week or so ago, he'd be available in two, three weeks, uh, so I need to follow up with him tomorrow.
So you, you'll be managing that project, Mr. Summers?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is proposed North Branford High School athletic storage building. Mr. Florio.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm here to request the superintendent. Um, superintendent, we'd just like to know if the town had any opposition to us moving forward with the, uh, permit process, um, to construct the storage building. We want to get rid of the five storage trailers that are on the practice field, we wanna build a thirty-by-eighty storage building there, um, to house athletic storage for our track and field football, our outdoor sports, that, um, that equipment's getting ruined now in the storage trailers, um, constantly have to replace it due to mold and rodents and stuff like that. Uh, we also want to house the golf carts in there, so we get them out of the auto shop, but the auto shop teachers have to keep pulling the golf carts in and out every time he has class, and they shouldn't be out at the field anyway. Um, and also, we want to use a section for overflow storage. Uh, none of our schools have any storage anymore, and we're busting out. Uh, we always have things that we wanna hang on it, we don't wanna throw them away 'cause they're good, but we have nowhere to store them, so, you know, sometimes if a classroom has twenty-two students one year and eighteen the next, the teachers want the four desks out, what do we do with them? Um, you know, fire marshal keeps on us, not to store stuff in certain areas, so we, we like to have a, um, section in his garage for that. And, uh, also bulk delivery, a lot of times I have opportunities to get, to buy bulk delivery at a very low price on some of our supplies, and this would be a great place to store bulk deliveries and then distribute them to the rest of the schools, so, well. Last year, I did have an impromptu meeting with the town engineer and the building inspector at the site, see if they had any objections to where we wanted to put it. Uh, the town engineer said he would let us know how far we have to keep the building from the wetlands, um, as you know, it's a little wet back there. And then, uh, the building inspector, I talked to him about what he wanted there for our foundation and slab and, and, uh, construction of the building, and if we are to go forward, I'll supply him with a set of plans, of course, and, uh, so we just wanna know if the town has any opposition or starting that process.
Okay, so two questions. So, do they, do you have, is it a pre-formed, like a mungar building, or is it gonna be?
This is gonna be a construction project in conjunction with the, the wood shop class and the graphic design class. The wood shop teachers, we are, I mean, you all know me, I am a proponent of people going out into trades, and we want to get kids interested in the trades, and we do have a group that's interested in the trade. We want to have them involved in this entire project.
Cool.
We, we, I already sat down with the last year's class, teach them how to make a, uh, material list, they are gonna design the building, along with a, we do have a lot of volunteer help, we have a engineer, we have some local builders who have already pledged to help us out on this project, and, um, we wanna get the kids involved. We want them to be involved building this building, we want them to be proud of, they had a chance to put this up, and, uh.
So is all the money raised?
What's that?
Is all the money raised to put it up?
That's the superintendent's issue, that's not mine, he told me he's all set. Go ahead and talk to the town council.
Well, if he's got the money, we think that's a great thing.
He's not asking you, he told me to tell you, he's not asking you for funding.
I think it's, makes a lot of sense, if there's not overflow, and it's gonna help with overflow, it's gonna keep our equipment together, and there's not a funding issue, then, yeah.
Well, the, the only issue becomes that, because this is part of the, the high school and the, the building project, that this project has to get referred to the permanent project building committee to oversee it, because it's part of that project.
Yeah, I sit on the project building committee's meetings every Monday, I will definitely keep them appraised and get their okay, and have everybody take a look at it, especially Al, and make sure that we're doing everything correctly. Um, but we have concrete contractors, we have local builders, we've already spoke to supply companies, um, it's gonna be a trust roof, the trusses have already been designed, um, so we, um, we just have to put the final blueprint plan together for the building inspector.
So is he, I'm sorry, is he creating a new, a carpentry class? Or something to that effect for these students?
Actually, one of, one of the shop teachers already runs, as part of the wood shop, already runs, uh, what he calls, um, a home maintenance class, so they talk about build, remodeling, they talk about electrical and plumbing and, and all kinds of stuff, I've sat in on a lot of them. Um, teach kids about plumbing, uh, it, it, it really is great, we have two great shop teachers that are really dedicated to the kids.
So they're gonna do, they're gonna do everything, they're gonna do the electrical, they're gonna do plumbing?
No, 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 they're not gonna do any electrical work, there's no plumbing in it. Um, so it's, it's strictly a storage building, our local electrician will do the wiring for the lights, um, it's, they'll be, they'll be hands-on to see, they'll be on-site and participate in what they can, of course, they can't do everything, but we'll get them involved in some of the parts of it. At least they'll actually be able to see the whole issue from start to finish. Design, material list, putting, putting foundation, building roof.
Part of that should be coming to the permanent project building committee, so that.
What's that?
Part of it should be that they take turns coming to the permanent project building committee, so they can see the whole process, because, because they're gonna have the.
I could probably convince a couple of them to do that.
Because they're gonna have the final say on, on the whole thing, because you don't have any prints yet, right? You don't have a design?
We don't, we, we have an idea what we want to do, it's a strict cable-ended storage building, nothing out of the ordinary, but we'll, we have to have something for Steve when we go for permit, we'll definitely have a set for him.
Okay.
So the thing that makes me nervous is that you don't have a set of plans yet, but yet, the funding's all set.
Well.
So, that's.
We don't have, we don't have a new, we don't have a new set of plans.
So, anytime somebody tells me the funding's all set.
Yeah.
Without a set of plans or anything put together, that's a red flag for me.
Well, we had, we had what we wanted to do, a thirty-by-eighty building, it was gonna be masonry walls and a truss roof. We're now going with wood frame walls and siding and a truss roof to, to the monetary masonry versus wood. Um, but it's a very simple design, I, I have a picture of the same exact building we want to do, so when it came to the wood and everything that's involved, all I really needed was the thirty-by-eighty design, the height I'm going, what kind of, and any lumberyard could figure out a materialist and give me the cost.
Everyone covers that. I'm, I'm not, if you guys are gonna sell fund, I'm, I'm not against it, I just can't approve something without seeing numbers and numbers.
Are we approving the ability for that to sit there and start the project?
Well, I don't know.
No, well, we have to give them permission.
Just give us, all we're looking for is.
So that they can construct it, and then it gets referred to permanent project, and then they have to follow all of the rules of permitting, but they can't start that process until we give them permission that they can build it.
Nobody here wants a clear understanding of where the money's coming from? Nobody cares?
Um, we're trying to figure out where it's coming from, but, listen, I'm a big proponent of.
Yep, I, I am too.
Of them, completely, and this is, um, something that, I mean, obviously, we, we've been talking about, and Scott's been talking about, and now all of a sudden, poof, the money just appears. So, um, yeah, I have the same issue.
As far as the funding goes.
I am so behind this, absolutely.
You guys should speak to the superintendent.
Like, where is the money?
I, I agree, I'm, I'm in full support of it, especially if you guys are gonna sell fund.
Um, just, the town attorney would like.
Perhaps you can approve the concept, subject to them coming back with a budget, including a source of funding and plans for your approval.
I think that's what makes sense. But there is no concept, right?
Yeah.
Currently.
You're approving the concept, them building a building of approximate certain size at the school, subject to before they put a shovel in the ground, they have to come back with a budget, a set of plans, and a source of funding for your approval.
That's fair enough, sure.
So you're telling them, okay, we like the idea, but you're not starting it until you show what it's gonna cost and that you're gonna.
That's fair enough, sure.
So it'll give you that protection, I think you need.
Talk to me, that's all we're looking for, is your.
Is it gonna be heated?
We, we saved the, we saved the hung unit heater that we had in the greenhouse, which was oversized for the greenhouse, and we're gonna install that in there, it's an LP gas hung unit heater, that will, we're not looking to heat that building to ninety degrees in the wintertime, we'll take the chill out of it, that unit heater will maintain that building very easily to fifty, fifty degrees.
Well, I'm just, I, I was, was asking because of the issues now about the mold and everything else, and if it's not gonna be heated or anything else, are we gonna eliminate those issues, or are we?
We're eliminating those issues, it'll, it's gonna have, it's gonna have thermostatic roof ventilation, and it's gonna have hung, hung unit gas heaters, so.
Right.
We, we have that taken care of.
All right.
They're coming back in front of us anyway, right, so?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea, you have to come back to us. After, after you get all the.
Yeah, well, like I said.
Ducks in a row.
Not a problem, we, I have to supply a set of prints anyway, to the town, so, once we finally decide on exactly what we want, and we have that set, I will definitely work through the builder committee with that, and I could run it by them, and they could even tell you that they're good, or whatever.
Thank you for doing this too, and thank you for including the students. I was involved when I was in high school with a similar project, and, uh, and it was a, a real sense of pride, and we all took a picture in front of it when we were done and stuff, so it's, it's, uh, it's a good learning experience.
This'll be our third project with the students, uh, the students built the ticket booth, and the students built the, this stand on the, on the, uh, on the bleachers, so, you know, this'll be our third project with the kids, and be great.
Hope you covered your furniture.
Okay, so.
I went in the garden before I came.
So, so Brian, do you, what's the wording we should use in our motion, because we don't have a motion in our package?
Let's, let's have a motion that the, uh, North Branford Town Council approves the concept of an athletic storage building at the North Branford High School, subject to, uh, the Board of Education coming back with specific plans, um, a budget for construction, and, uh, proof of source of sufficient funding for the same.
My motion is stipulated by town, uh, town attorney. Can we add in about the referral to the permanent project? Oh, I know, I add to my motion, um, in addition, referral to the permanent project building committee.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Miller. Any further discussion? All in?
Oh, I wanna finish this, I have another question, after, it's not gonna do with this, though.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
All right, John.
I want to have you in the hot seat. Brian, um, am I even allowed to ask him a question from something back earlier in the meeting? He did mention permanent projects, so is it worth me to go backwards a little bit, or I can't bring up something?
You asking him a question about that?
Yes.
If you want to, I mean.
Yeah, it's noticeable.
So I make sure. Um, John, what do you think when you hear about the, uh, the police station issues with the heat and air issues? Because I, I trust you more.
I'm a board of ed guy. Um, you know, like I said, I sit at the committee meetings, I, I listen to it all. There's, there's a lot of excuses, and, and a lot of poor excuses for not doing what they're supposed to. Listen, I, I'm not a great proponent of train equipment. Um, you've seen what the problems we've had with train equipment at the high school, and how long it takes to get it under control and working properly, but I will say that if you have a good energy management system and a company that's on the ball, like we have at the two schools, it makes it a lot easier. There was no way they were ever gonna balance that system without changing to brand-new filters, so I don't know why they even bothered trying to balance the system without anybody checking the filters first, that's the first thing you have to do. Um, so, I mean, it just sounds like, to me, exactly what Alan Dave said, it sounds like there's a lot of apprentices on the job, and it sounds like there's really not a lot of good licensed professional people keeping up on what you're supposed to do to have a building operating correctly, that's what it sounds like to me. Kenny Ash tells me every day about the stuff that goes on, going on over there that he has seen, Kenny knows what he's talking about too, and, to tell you the truth, it's a shame, town's paying good money, and when you have to argue with these contractors over and over and over to get what you're paying for. But Lou knows what he's talking about, guaranteed, I would go by what Lou says, knows his stuff, but it does take a long time, very long time, to balance out this new equipment, it takes forever. Took a long time in the high school to finally get an equal out, and now we're gonna start all over again with the second phase, so, it, it's, but there's no way it shouldn't be eighty percent humidity in a brand-new building with a state-of-the-art HVAC system.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but thanks.
No, no problem, and, and to echo what they said, Barrett Roofing is doing a half of a job at the intermediate school.
It looks fantastic.
I meet with them every day, cursing.
I look at it every morning.
Unbelievable, and, and they're, they're doing a fantastic job over there.
I love the way it fits into the rest of the campus, too.
It's actually.
It's tying it all in.
It's actually making that ugly building look nice.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, really good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, the next item, uh, refer the Park and Recreation Pavilion to the Permanent Project Building Committee. This is actually, due to the cost of this project, and also, you know, the athletic building for the high school, um, and they are gonna be town buildings, it was just an oversight on our part, this should have been done a couple months ago when we approved the funding, um, for it, so there is a suggested motion on page twenty-four.
The North Branford Town Council hereby refers to proposed Park and Recreation Pavilion project to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. The next item is the Poco Festival 2024, request to hold special event for sale of beer, wine, and premixed margaritas.
That's a big yes for me.
Okay, so...
With the stipulation they bring those margaritas in for us to try first?
So, so they did come before the last meeting and asked for beer and wine as they have in the past. This year, we have a new vendor that is the, the vendor for the beer and wine tent. And it's Los Mariachis out of Wallingford. And he has asked if they could serve margaritas, which has hard alcohol in it, which was not approved by the council. I did talk to the police chief because that goes to the police department first if they would allow that before it would have to come here. So the stipulation is, and Los Mariachis also had told us this, is that they would not be mixing them on-site. They would be mixing at their restaurant in Wallingford and be bringing them here. So there would be no hard alcohol on-site that they're mixing. So it's premixed and the chief was fine with this. So this is why it's come back to us.
So it's one giant cooler of margaritas?
It's the big tanks, they may say.
Does that change the license that's needed or anything?
No, they, they, they have a mobile catering license now because they have food trucks and everything. So they are carrying the insurance, the liquor liability, everything is on them for that. So, we are, it would only be one or two types of margaritas. It's not that you can order all these different kinds. We will specify to them which ones we want. They do have an absolutely wonderful fresh strawberry margarita and that might be one of them that we choose.
Mango, mango.
So, and, and just, just so you know that any volunteer for the Poco Fest cannot of age, go into, or in uniform, cannot go into the beer and wine tent and drink with a Poco shirt on or uniform. You can turn, when your shift is over, you can turn your shirt on inside out and you can go in and, you know.
Have a margarita.
So it's, it's fine. So there is a suggested motion on page twenty-seven of our packet here for...
North Branford Town Council hereby permits the sale of beer, wine, and premixed margaritas at the 2024 Potato and Corn Festival.
Second.
The motion has been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any further discussion?
I'd like to maybe put a damper on it. I love margaritas, but my concern is, are we sure that we wanna step it up to that? Do we, do we want to do that? Are you sure we wanna go, go to, make, go to that next step? You know, is, is next year, is it gonna be grain alcohol punch? You know what I mean, are we gonna keep going? You know what I mean?
It depends on who we get. This is the first year we're having this vendor do the beer and wine tent. Last year, we had someone else and we did have some other issues with him, with that company and we chose to look elsewhere for this year. So my personal feeling is I, I, I think we need to try it and see once, how it goes. And I did talk to the chief first before it even came to this level to see what his feeling was on it. And he was, he was fine with it because there's no hard alcohol on, on site.
Honestly, I, I actually did the tent last year and everybody that came in, they were pretty, they were very responsible. They weren't...
And, and we do limit the number of drinks they can buy in an hour also in, in the tent.
Rose, do, do any of the volunteers or the people running the Poco have the ability to tell the vendor, no more for that person?
Yes, absolutely.
So that's something people work in.
And, and all of their servers have to be, what's the term?
Tip certified.
Tips?
They don't have to be.
Oh, they don't have to be?
But he is doing, what's it, these employees that he's having.
Okay. Tip certified.
I'm sure they took this all into consideration.
So like last year, Nick and I volunteered, so if we identified somebody as having had too much, we can go up to them and they have to abide by that?
Absolutely. And if we have, and if we have any problems, be, you know, that, if they're not listening to you, we have a number of police officers on staff. I did ask Jimmy if they had any issues, the chief, if they had any issues last year with the beer and wine garden because it was really the first year that we did it this way. And he said that's not the population that he's concerned about.
But that was beer and wine?
Yes. But, but it was, there was like no issues at all with it. I mean, I value your opinion and you're, you're welcome to have it and you can vote whatever way you would like. It's fine, so.
Once again, I think they took this all into consideration anyway, so.
Yes.
It all goes the same, they can't walk out of, they cannot walk out with it. Even if, and people tried and...
It doesn't really change the alcohol, like, percentages, whether it's a malt or a... Yeah, it's gonna be same alcohol content in the way, in that capacity. I think when you have hard alcohol, you have to worry about people taking shots. And shots are much smaller, much easier to take and a lot more alcohol consumption can take place. But this will have, for instance, the, the craze for most of these seltzers. Well, most seltzers have moved away from malt liquor because malt is kind of gross and they've gone to a tequila or vodka base because it's a cleaner liquor. It tends to, I think metabolize better. So I think most people tend to like that better. But I wouldn't think it's gonna change much in the way of how someone's gonna get intoxicated. That's what I would assume.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries with one no. Next item is appropriation transfers.
Yes, good evening. You basically have three separate items before you. The first one in the non-shaded area is some minor changes in the mayor and council departments covering some small overages. The first block in the shaded area is from the community center. You'll see that they're transferring money to cover some failing kitchen equipment as well as some additional maintenance costs. And the bottom shaded block is looking to take some surpluses they had in the current year and kick them out to the Park Maintenance Reserve Fund.
Okay, I know Jesse is here tonight, the director of Park Rec. Can you just come up for a minute behind this? So can you just, I, I know the Park Maintenance Reserve Fund is huge to your department. Can you just explain the benefit of being able to take some of this money and put it into?
Absolutely. So the money that's left over this year is from electricity. When we budgeted the STW building, we were working with the Board of Ed for the first time, splitting the costs and figuring that all out. So we also had a mild winter, so our electric bills were less and our heating bills were less. So we were able to have a surplus this year. The Park Maintenance Reserve is kind of critical to what Franny and I do to keep up with the parks. A lot of times we do, we did over ten thousand dollars in fencing repairs this year to fix Totucket Valley, to fix STW, to keep it safe. If we had to come before town council and go before the rec commission every single time we need to make one of those repairs, it delays safety issues for the season. So by being able to have the Park Maintenance Reserve and keep that funded, it helps us to do the critical repairs that we need to do. We just had a bench split that's an ADA split. It'll be paid out of the Park Maintenance Reserve instead of trying to figure out how to come up with twelve hundred dollars to fix a bench. So thirty thousand may seem like a lot, but it goes very quickly when you have these critical safety repairs at the parks that need to happen. So that's my request for the funding. Any other questions?
This doesn't negate the, the limit that's set by the town, right? Like, she's still only allowed up to a certain amount.
This fund is under Franny, so it'd be under the fifteen thousand dollar bid phone?
Okay.
Correct, and the fence maintenance bid is on a state contract, which is why we were able to do those repairs without going out to bed.
Perfect, I just wanna make sure we should keep everything...
We still follow all of the standard protocols for this account.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. Okay, so do I have a motion for the...
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by town manager John Traver, finance director.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item is recommended changes to administrator's benefit policy. So, this has, we've had several discussions on this. So I think at the last executive session that we had that we talked about this, we came up with what we were going to approve off of this. So there was, there's four items, as you will see on page thirty here. So, do I hear a motion?
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
I thought we had decided about routine, so, the number four.
Uh, we, we did because none of the other bargaining units had gotten it, so we were not, we were not...
So that wouldn't be in number four?
Four, we would not do, correct. These, these were their proposals. It's not, it doesn't mean that we're giving all of these on here. This is what they came forward with and after we discussed it, I believe the consensus was to act on number one and number three from our discussions of what they had proposed on here. So do I hear a motion to grant proposal number one from, for the administrators? It's the biennial equity adjustment for salary ranges. And number three is a two hundred dollar increase in the employer match to the four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan.
So moves. Do I have to read it?
Uh, no. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Abelson, seconded by Counselor Polizia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here for that conversation.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Next item is agreement between South Central Regional Council of Government and the Town of North Branford for the Regional Cybersecurity and Protection Program.
You may recall, this is a contingency appropriation that you both previously endorsed and made the, the money transfer already to the contingency appropriation. This is now the language to actually enact the study. This was phase one of a cybersecurity audit that will dictate what needs to be done, if anything, in phases two, three, and four subsequently. But you can't proceed until you undertake phase one. And as is mentioned in the memo, the council of government got a grant and they're funding a portion of it. And the balance is, is on us. And again, you guys previously approved that at a prior town council meeting.
Okay.
The North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes town manager Michael P. Downs to sign this agreement between the South Central Regional Council of Governments and the Town of North Branford for the Regional Cybersecurity Protection Program.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next item is review and approval of specification for RFP nine-two-five-zero-zero-nine tax and assessment software.
Madam Mary, council will remember last month that we heard from our task collector and our assessor with regards to a desire to perform with changes in the software. And you heard about those software programs. This bid spec is before you tonight to begin that process.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve specs for RFP nine-two-five-zero-zero-nine?
I move that we approve RFP nine-two-five-zero-zero-nine for the tax and assessment software program.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Goad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Before we go on to the next amendment, I just need to make a motion. We need someone to make a motion to add, we need to add to executive session discussion on additional police personnel.
Motion is stipulated.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We should list who, who's included in it as well.
Well, we aren't...
Well, we're not in it yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We're just going to amend it.
Sorry.
Okay.
What would that, that would be B?
B.
Okay.
Okay, now on to citizen statements and petitions. Any citizen statements? Okay.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, including the town attorney, town manager, Chief Lovelace.
Finance director?
Finance director.
I should also have the assistant town...
And an assistant town manager as well. Anyone else, did I miss anyone?
No.
No? Thank you.
Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Yes, we have.